But no, it's like in the worst part of Detroit between the two cars that don't have any tires and the gunshot that goes off. It's on Oakwood Boulevard, Oakland Boulevard.
Oh.
And at Clay.
I can't believe you went here.
At Clay.
So obviously people still go there.
It's really special.
Good evening. Welcome to this forum for County Commission District 18. Today is July 12, 2012. This forum will be featuring one Republican and two Democratic candidates who have filed for County Commission for District 18. The sponsor of this forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland Area. I am Tara Moon, a member of the League of Women Voters of Oakland Area. I am not a resident of this district. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, national, nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our communities strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one on issues that impact our local, state, and national communities. If you're interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, please pick up some of the membership materials that we have here tonight or visit our website The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or political party. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and the sponsors take no responsibility. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask that the audience remain silent during the forum, so please take this opportunity to turn off your cellphones and pagers. We ask that the candidates answer the questions with their views only and not interrupt another candidate. The candidates will be answering questions submitted by the audience and screened for duplication and appropriateness by League of Women Voters member Jerry Burden. Page Laura Gagola will be circulating through the crowd tonight with paper and pencils, so if at any point you think of a question, you can raise your hand, she will come and bring you a card. When you're finished with your card, you can raise it up in the air and she will come and collect it. The format is as follows. The candidates will be given one minute for an opening statement, one minute to answer, I'm sorry, in alphabetical order, I should say. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the questions in rotation unless I decide to extend it. All candidates will have one minute for a closing statement at the end of the questions. The candidates will be allowed equal time to answer all the questions, and our timer is League of Women Voters member Judy Bateman. Tonight's candidates are Steve Zimberg, Republican, Craig Covey, Democrat, and Helene Zack, Democrat. We'll begin the forum now with one-minute opening statements, starting with Mr. Zimberg.
Running for public office is new to me, but I'm enthusiastically excited about the challenge. I graduated from Hillsdale College in Economics and Business Administration. I'm a certified financial planner, a certified paralegal, and a union electrician. My special trait is my ability to spot issues and apply creative thinking. All government institutions and their friends have gotten too big and powerful, while most communities, families, and businesses are suffering dearly. This especially impacts our kids and future generation. What's missing is the true voice and active voice of the citizen. We need to reclaim our voice and clean our county, restore its strengths, reduce its weaknesses, replace its bureaucracy with a moral entrepreneurial spirit. I don't have all the answers and I'm not perfect, but I love this community and I'll do my best to make a meaningful difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey.
Thank you. I've held elective office for the past 13 years here in Oakland County, first as a city councilman, then as the mayor of Ferndale, and now as your county commissioner. I promoted this region with new ways of doing things. We took Ferndale from a declining inner-ring suburb with an empty canyon of a downtown and turned it into the thriving, gleaming, and popular city that it is. We enacted green policies, cutting costs, reducing energy usage, increasing recycling, showing that we can grow the economy while protecting our environment. Organizing events, I've helped raise more than a quarter million dollars over the last 16 years for local charities such as youth assistance, police auxiliary, AIDS prevention, and public art, all the while adding to the culture and attracting new residents, including young families. I led a breakthrough at the county to begin planning public transit. Through my advocacy for embracing diversity, we've shown the region that all people can get along and create a true community that is stronger, safer, and more interesting. I'm now bringing these ideas to the whole county.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zack.
Although I have served as commissioner for almost 10 years, I never set out to be a politician. What I set out to do 10 years ago was bring my perspective as a social worker to the table, and that is what I have done. For example, I have fought for more resources for the South End of Oakland County. I helped change the philosophy of the county park system and bring the new county park called Catalpa Oaks to this region in Southfield. I co-led and published a strategic plan regarding seniors that has improved senior transportation already. For years, I served as vice chair of an effort to prevent jail overcrowding emergencies and protect public safety. As a result of this initiative, the county didn't have to spend $100 million on a new jail. I was instrumental in helping the mentally ill get treatment rather than putting them in jail. I also pride myself on stopping on solving problems for my constituents that I represent and the communities I serve.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. We will now begin the question portion of this forum. The first question will start with Mr. Zimberg. The question is, for current commissioners while on county commission, what have you -- let me rephrase this, because we can't speak to incumbents. What would you do if you become county commissioner to address inadequate public transportation issues? Mr. Zimberg?
Could you repeat the question, just so I...
Yes, I'm sorry. What will you do as county commissioner to address inadequate public transportation issues?
That's a good question. I think that whether we like it or not, times are changing and the middle class is getting -- reducing, which means that we need public transportation down the road more than ever. I think that if I were to work on it, I would have it over longer term, you know, not just make a decision, a multi-billion dollar decision off the cuff, but it would be something that would be transitional. I think I would prefer to have it along maybe the highways, because then you don't have to buy up all the residential hoses and break up the communities. But I do think it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey.
As a councilman and also as mayor in Ferndale previous, this city began to advocate across the region for mass public transportation. We were one of the early voices to do so. When I got on Oakland County Commission as a freshman, I was told by a lot of folks up there that the first term that you're up there, you tend to sit back and be quiet and you learn and you meet people. I wasn't content to do that, and the very first year was able to get past, with bipartisan support, a complete streets policy for Oakland County. This was earth-shaking, this was brand-new, it had never been done. Republicans in Oakland County had prevented public transportation progress. I was able to at least begin to break that logjam. Complete streets, of course, means that you begin to build with an eye towards future mass transit. You include bicycles, you include pedestrians, you include methods for buses and trains, and we're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zack.
Ideally, I've worked hard to get a smart millage passed throughout Oakland County without opt-out, but we've been unable to do that. I did support the complete streets resolution. I think it's a wonderful concept. I've yet to see any action from it yet. I believe that they're meeting, but I'd like to see some results. How do we move things forward and get things to change? I hope that there will be more community voices in Oakland County supporting that publicly, coming to our commission meeting, to move the needle to get it to happen throughout Oakland County. And then we have to support other regional initiatives such as ARPATH. Hopefully, we will have a regional program sooner versus later, and there is now private support to support transportation as well, so hopefully we can get something going soon.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. The next question will start with Mr. Covey. How do you feel about Oakland County's rigorous prosecution of medical marijuana caregivers and patients, and what have you done to address medical marijuana issues in Oakland County?
That's a good question as well. The rigorous prosecution of patients is really unfortunate. You know, political consultants and political handlers would say to an elected official, "Don't touch that issue, it's controversial." And I was told that years ago, and I refused to follow that advice. One of the very first elected officials to come out in favor of the idea of allowing the medical use of marijuana for seniors, for people with debilitating diseases such as HIV and AIDS. The voters in Ferndale three times voted to decriminalize medical marijuana. The entire state did, the voters in Huntington Woods and Oak Park did as well. And it's a travesty that our county prosecutor and our county sheriff have ignored the wishes of the voters and have repeatedly gone after legitimate businesses like we opened here in Ferndale and thrown people in jail, including grandmothers, and I just think it's awful and I think it's got to change, and the voters are going to have to make that change.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zack.
Well, I'm in support of medical marijuana to help those who are ailing with different diseases find some comfort. Regarding medical marijuana, fortunately, in the state, we have seen some change, some clarification on the rules and regulations. We will bring that home to prosecution, and I'm all in favor of straightening out the law in favor of the patients who need medical marijuana.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. Mr. Zimberg.
Another good question. I think it's really kind of a -- the whole subject of marijuana and legalization is off the wall. It doesn't just apply to people who are seriously ill. It probably applies to people with Osgoers, people with maybe autism, people who have ADD, people that -- many, many people. You know, we're all different. And I think if you looked at the jails, and you saw that 50% of the people sitting in the room in the jail are there for getting caught with a joint or something, this is ridiculous. It's gotten out of control. And like my mom says, "I don't care if it's legal or not, you know, stay away from it." But that's like a personal thing, to keep it within the family.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. The next question will start with Ms. Zack. Describe your views on budgeting and your experience with budgeting.
I have served on the Finance Committee the 10 years that I've been there, so I've gone from start to finish. We hold intensive budget hearings. All of the committees come before us, we sit there with rulers, we go through things line by line, question, challenge all of the different issues of the departments. I've been sitting at the table when Oakland County went from doing two-year budgets, now we're forecasting three years ahead, so I'm very proud of the fact that I've been at the table to oversee that. We also have been very creative. We've funded our healthcare and legacy costs by bonding out those costs several years ago at a fixed rate. So unlike other municipal governments, we've been able to deal with those large expenses. And I've been at the table overseeing the budget the whole 10 years.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. Mr. Zimberg. I'm sorry, the question is, describe your views and experience with budgeting.
It's -- thank you. Budgeting is critical, and as long as you can plan the budget in advance, you've got the year to work it out, to keep yourself within budget. The problem is when we reach out too far and we want to go the extra mile and push something forward and take the money from the future, because that ends up outside of the budget, and then that portion, that's like the deficit, keeps growing, growing, You know, it shouldn't be too difficult to stay within the budget. It's part of life, I would enjoy being on that committee as well.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey.
It's too bad a lot of people do not understand budgets. I've been involved with managing, organizing, setting up, and following budgets for more than 25 years. For 22 years as an executive director of a nonprofit that had an annual budget of $1 million. For 11 years as a city councilman and a mayor, operating a budget of $18 million, and for the past two years, helping oversee the Oakland County budget, which is in excess of $780 million. But it also includes managing your own home budget at home, that's a whole lot less than that. One of the things that we need to think about, though, in Oakland County is that our budget, we're proud that we have a surplus, but it's way out of control. A city or a government entity should have a rainy day fund of 15% to 20%, that's under general accounting principles. The Oakland County budget is way in excess of $200 million surplus, that's way above what it should be. And when people are hungry, when people don't have jobs, when our roads are not being worked on, we shouldn't have that size of a surplus.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Please, candidates speak directly into the microphones, some folks in the back are having a hard time hearing you. Okay, the next question will start with Mr. Zimberg. Why is diversity important, and what will you do to deal with this issue? Mr. Zimberg.
Diversity is, you know, we're all equal, and we're all in this life together, and we're moving along, and we'll come and go at different stages, but if we don't get along, it makes things a lot different, difficult for all of us. I think that it's been a big issue for, you know, the older generation, but for our kids, I don't even think they realize what any difference at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey.
Thanks. Support for diversity and understanding the value of diversity is an absolute core value of mine that goes back to my teenage years. I've worked for more than 35 years trying to make life better for the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender community, to great success, beginning in college at the age of 18 years old. People need to understand that diversity is not something that we just need to accept, it's something we need to embrace, it's something we need to value. Life would be very boring if everyone was the same religion, the same color, the same orientation, or the same age. And what we've done in places like Ferndale, and we're doing now throughout the county and indeed across the region, is understanding that we are stronger, we are more interesting communities, we're safer, when everyone gets a seat at the table, regardless of your race, your religion, your color, your age, and we've certainly demonstrated that in Ferndale, and it makes me very, very proud.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zack.
Well, I'm all for inclusion and respecting difference. I have a history of training in workplaces. I trained on speaking up for respect in the workplace for the Road Commission in Oakland County, and that was an interesting experience. When I first started 10 years ago, I kept making jokes that I was a minority in multiple different ways. I was one of six Democrats at the table, I was one of a couple women, I was one of the few from South Oakland County, and I'm Jewish, and I was the only Jewish person at the table. And so I know what it feels like to be in a minority position, and I treat people fairly and respectfully. And interestingly, I had what I called my fan mail when I've been running, and I got an interesting letter from an anonymous person that talked about, "You Jews think you all have money and you Jews are sick." So I have personally experienced this, particularly on the campaign trip.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. The next question will start with Mr. Covey. What have you done or will you do to reduce jail expenditures and recidivism?
Thank you, and I've got some hate mail I could share with you, too, going back years and years, working in the gay community. Like I said, part of the problem, and Mr. Zimberg was absolutely correct, almost 50% of people in the jails right now are in for possession of things like marijuana. We waste $400 million a year in this country on that type of issue. What I would like to see is violent criminals kept in jail, not paroled. Recidivism, I think we spend way too much housing people and not enough on treatment. So instead of jailing people for, as Mr. -- as my friend to the right said, for having a joint, you know, maybe counseling is more in order. We need to use jails to keep the violent criminals in, we need to stop letting them out on parole that's unsupervised, we need to not allow early release of criminals that have violent histories, but for victimless crimes and for crimes that deal with substance abuse, counseling.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zack.
Would you repeat the question, please, again?
Sure. What have you done or will you do to reduce jail expenditures and recidivism?
Thank you. I've worked intensively on this project. I served on the Jail Population Management Task Force and Jail Overcrowding Initiative for five years as county commissioner. I was a co-chair. And what we did through this initiative is that we were releasing 200 or 300 people for jail overcrowding emergencies. So we studied the whole issue and made quite a few changes on legislation in the state of Michigan, as well as how we do felony pleas, and other operational things, using tethering, directing people into treatment. And what we did is we are now managing the population better to make sure that the scary people are in jail and the people who aren't scary and need to be punished are on the streets instead. And we saved $100 million from building a new jail, so I feel that that was a significant effort that I've worked on in jail management.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. Mr. Zimberg.
Well, I talked about the first half in the jails, let's talk about the second half. I also believe about half of the people in jail overnight in the local county jails are in there for child support issues. These are people that fall behind theoretically in their child support, or maybe they paid it, but the IRS has to hold it for six months, or you know, maybe there's other issues. I think that there's much, and they also are the same people from our community, they're charged 50 bucks a day or something like, while they're in there, and on and on and on. I think that there's much, we can address that issue in many other ways outside of the jails, and that would save a tremendous amount of money.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. The next question will start with Ms. Zack. The senior population is a growing demographic in Oakland County. What will you do for seniors at the county level?
Well, I am pleased to say that I am the appointee from Oakland County Commission to the Area Agency on Aging 1B, and I've served on that group now for six years. And I had to really lobby for this appointment, because it was a Republican appointment that they gave to me as a Democrat. And in that initiative, we oversee all different programs for seniors. In particular, I co-led an initiative where we did a senior strategic plan. We called it the Silver Tsunami: A Wave of Opportunity. We studied multiple issues and we made lots of recommendations. Thus far, we have improved one of the recommendations, which is a transportation program for seniors, and there are other initiatives underway as a result of this strategic plan.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. Mr. Zimberg.
A substantial -- could you please repeat the question?
The senior population is a growing demographic in Oakland County. What will you do for seniors at the county level?
It's growing and it's growing rapidly, because we're all living longer naturally and in better health. I think they're all primarily on fixed income, and it's important that we make life as meaningful for them as possible. As I understand it, 3% or in the last three days of life is something like 25% of all healthcare costs. Well, we have the programs like hospice that says, "All right, for the last three days of life, you don't have to go to the hospital." So if there's a tremendous amount of money right there being saved, maybe there's a way to transport some of, transfer some of that money into programs that would be very meaningful and enriching for our seniors, and so that they can share some of their special wisdom with the rest of us younger people.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey.
Well, at a local level, the first thing I did when I was elected to office was to help this city open the Coolic Community Center. We did not have a senior center 15 years ago, and I worked with Mayor Geddard and others to open that center. You know, the growing senior demographic is not just Oakland County, it's across the entire nation. And if we want seniors to age in place, and I'm part of that senior, or that Silver Tsunami, we need to halt urban sprawl, because the last thing you want are folks way out in the suburbs, way out in the excerpts. And so I am known to be advocating against urban sprawl, to fix what we have, and the idea of complete streets, again, is to enable people to move around, to use buses, to use crosswalks, for disabled folks to be able to travel. It's not just about cars, it's not just about trucks. And finally, we had that sad case of the woman in Royal Oak who was murdered, 90 years old. I'm sorry, I'll finish it, the next question, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. The next question will start with Mr. Zimberg. With reduced revenue from the housing decline, how do you maintain services without tax increases?
Well, I think that one way to get more income from the taxes, just off the top of my head, would be if someone falls behind a year in their property taxes, they're taxed at a rate of about 30-plus percent, 18% a year plus another 10 or 15% in February. If they were to be able to pay a lower rate of interest than skyrocketing credit card rates, I think that they would be able to, that would create, that would bring more money into the economy to keep those, so that they didn't have to reduce those benefits you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey.
Well, the whole concept of smart government is that you figure out ways to provide services at a lower cost. You know, for the past several years, we've been suffering under this Bush recession that was caused largely by the banks and some national situations that have hurt the middle class, have hurt working people. Our property values have been declining and fell sharply, and we all lost huge amounts of value. Government has to be able to do more smarter and more leaner. We did that in the city of Ferndale, we're doing it up at the county. We've been able to get concessions from the labor unions. We have to give people a break, we can, our treasurer is trying to set up a land bank. The solution is not to throw people out of their houses, the solution is to grow the economy, it's to try to bring jobs back. As I said, there's a, in excess of a $200 million surplus right now in Oakland County's budget, and there may be programs that we can use to stop people from being thrown out of their homes. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zack.
Well, three out of five communities in this new District 18 have the worst tax, are they one of the five worst taxable values? And so we have lower-income cities. So looking at how can we stabilize the housing, how can we increase revenue through business development, more people getting jobs, and then how can we do things more efficiently in a collaborative style? I see that there's a lot of sharing of services across these communities in the South End. Oakland County is Oakland County is also starting to offer more services that the communities can pick and choose. For example, the Cloud-to-Cloud Initiative, so that Oakland County will maintain the technology platform so that municipalities won't have to invest all the time in maintaining their own IT. So there's a whole menu of services that the county can offer to save money.
Thank you, Ms. Zach. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Covey. The DIA and Smart Bus are both asking for millages in August. Would you support these taxes and why?
Well, I certainly support the ability of the voters to vote on them, and I did so at the Oakland County. In terms of the DIA, they're following the model that the zoo did, and that, of course, passed resoundingly a couple of years ago. We were about to lose the zoo. The DIA is in deep trouble, and I worked with my fellow commissioners. It was close, it was tight up there. But there was a little bit of bipartisanship, and Republicans and Democrats did join together, and we voted to put that on the ballot. I'll be voting yes on the DIA. Absolutely on the Smart Millage as well. And it's too bad that cities and areas do have the ability to opt out, because we're never going to have a decent transportation system if Livonia or some other city decides they don't want to be a part of it. Transportation means that we all have to be working together. And it's too bad that Metro Detroit is one of the great cities of this planet that does not have public mass transit. And we need to push it, we need to talk about it, we need to write about it all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zach?
Well, I personally support both of the millages. I think that transportation is critical. I only wish that we didn't have opt-out on the Smart regarding the Detroit Institute of Arts. I feel strongly that people have the opportunity to vote yes or no. I personally love the Art Institute. I feel that it's an economic gem, and it really supports our whole region. So I hope that people will choose to support, to place a vote in support of the DIA Arts Authority.
Thank you, Ms. Zach. Mr. Zimberg?
In general, I'm for the DIA legislation, but there is an area of it that I'm very concerned about, and it has to do with government being a bully. Detroit is having some very difficult times, as we all know. And I think that Oakland County can do a little bit better than saying, you know what, we'll work with you, but you gotta let all of our people in our entire county, the richest county in the world, get to go there for free, as long as this is in place. I don't like that kind of extremism. What's going to happen? We're going to be going there for free and no one else can go because their fees are going to have to double in Detroit and otherwise? Maybe I'm missing it, but I'm, I think that we can do better. I don't think that it should be free. And I don't think that it should have $150,000 a year gasoline cost that's free also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Zach. What will you do to support the different issues of the five cities in the district?
Well, I've had the pleasure and the honor to represent five communities in my present district. And you're very busy, you're running around, going to lots of different city council meetings, and representing their voice, the South End voice, meeting their unique needs, solving their issues. I'm very visible at my communities, as much as I can be. I talk to them about issues, I take it to Oakland County, I solve problems, and so I look forward to the next set of five communities.
Thank you, Ms. Zach. Mr. Zimberg?
I need the question repeated again.
Sure.
What will you do to support the different issues of the five cities in the district?
I think that the best way to answer that question would be to leave it to the people, to let the people have a platform where they can come forward and say what concerns them the most. In Huntington Woods, for example, they passed out some questionnaires for when times started getting rough, and they said, do you guys really need your sidewalk shoveled every Thursday? Or do you need your, the grass cut every four days? I'm making that up, you know, as far as the number of days. But the point is, is the whole community said, yeah, we can deal with that, and no, we can deal, we can deal without that. And as a result, Huntington Woods is doing pretty good. And I think everyone, all the other communities could do better because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey?
Well, some of my core positions and efforts really help all. Working to promote diversity helps all five communities. Pushing and advocating for public transportation is going to lift all five communities. Organizing and educating folks about green policies saves all the communities and helps with the environment and saves money. But all five cities are also unique. In Hazel Park, I've been working with that city to help raise funds for The Promise. The Promise is a wonderful program that raises money that will enable every child that goes through the Hazel Park Public Schools to go on to college. Issues in Huntington Woods might be a little different. Issues in Royal Oak Township are different as well. And so in Ferndale's case, we have a thriving downtown, some of those lessons can be learned, perhaps in Oak Park or in Hazel Park. So each city is unique and has its own particular issues. Oak Park needs help with budgeting right now, and I look forward to serving all five communities.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. The next question kind of builds on the question that you all just answered. We're going to start with Mr. Zimberg. How active are you in reaching out to your constituents online? How are you accessible?
I think if we're not going to be accessible, that's going to be our downfall. Try getting in touch with your politicians right now. There has to be, and I don't know, I mean, I can leave my email address. Right now, it's being spam to death, so I'm not so sure that that's a good, a good way to go. Might be better that it's all given to me in written form, so that I can review it at a setting. And I think that that will help all of us by learning how we can reach each other more effectively.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey?
Actually, Steve, you could reach me right now if you have a cellphone on you. You could reach me by Twitter. You could reach my Facebook page. You could email me. It took me a while, because I'm not a young person, but I've gotten support and help from some young folks who've taught me a whole lot about internet outreach. And I use it all the time to talk with and reach out to and hear from constituents. My email is craig@coveyforOakland.com. I have a website that is www.coveyforOakland.com. I have a blog site where I write all the time and have over 100 essays and editorials at coveys-corner.blogspot.com. I have two Facebook pages, one is Craig Covey, one is Friends of Craig Covey, and I have a Twitter account as well. We, in the slightly older generation, have to learn how to use mass media or the new social media. I also happen to like the old media, and I still read newspapers. I'm the only person in the gym, I think, who pulls out a newspaper and reads it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zach?
Thank you. I'm very responsive to the communities that I represent. I answered hundreds of emails that came to me regarding the DIA. I heard from more people on that issue, and I took the time to answer each one of those individually. The communities that I've represented presently were really not very interested in social media. And so it's this opportunity to represent Ferndale where it's very critical, and I've learned, this old dog has learned some new tricks. And I now have a website at the urging of some future constituents here. I have a Facebook page, I'm using Facebook more, I'm using a lot more technology. I obviously have a lot of learning opportunity, and I look forward to growing in that area and responding to the needs of the Ferndale constituents.
Thank you, Ms. Zach. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Covey. As the county commission tackles ongoing budget challenges, what are the guiding principles that should inform your decision-making?
Thank you. Well, I have always believed in balanced budgets. I wish our federal government could figure that out. And I follow that in my own personal life, with organizations that I've run over the years, with events that I put on and organize. It's not that hard. You spend less than you take in. It's pretty basic. And again, there are still ways you can do services. There is always waste in government. I worked for the Michigan Department of Public Health for 20 years as a consultant, and I'm well aware of government waste. I was, again, involved with the city. I'm not criticizing government, I'm just saying that I know that there's always some waste that can be discovered. So my guiding philosophy is, never spend more than you have. Always remember that it's not your money. When I'm up there working on budgets for the county, or previously with the city of Ferndale, that is not my money. And so I treat it as if it's someone else's, which it is. And I always try to save and cut costs.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zach?
Well, I'm very fiscally prudent and conservative when it comes to spending money, and I absolutely value balanced budgets, and I'm proud of what Oakland County does, even though I don't necessarily agree with all of their spending priorities. However, at the same time, I will invest in those things that I feel are valuable to meet the needs of the citizens. For example, when we were doing budgeting two years ago, I was able to introduce an amendment to have another housing counselor to prevent foreclosure. And I was able to find the money in the budget and get a Republican colleague to agree to second it with me. And so we spent money for another housing counselor that the executive team did not value and did not want to do. And so, you know, finding the money to invest in things to meet the needs of your citizens, I'm willing to do that with a balanced budget.
Thank you, Ms. Zach. Mr. Zimberg?
I think with my background in economics, I've learned that we have to look beyond the short-term consequences of our actions. If it's just about short-term pleasures, for example, we could each accomplish every one of our goals, every one of them, just about. But long-term, we'd all be in a mess. So on the budget side, it's all about balancing and considering the longer-term consequences of our actions. I was a trustee of a billion-dollar pension plan, which was managing assets, but still we had a fiduciary responsibility to do it prudently, because there were 45,000 participants and recipients and beneficiaries, et cetera. And what we really just need to consider is the longer-term consequences of our actions, and we'll do fine.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Zach. This question will give you a chance to expand on some things that you've already said. What do you believe is the role of a county commissioner? If elected, what will be your top priorities?
Well, overall, the main function that we do as county commissioners is to oversee the budget and the operations of the county, and represent the voice of the district that we represent. And my, we haven't really talked about jobs, and that's a critical piece. And how do we, as in the county, serve people with jobs? And there's a couple of important initiatives through our Planning and Economic Development Department. We were able to support all entrepreneurial programs, as well as we have a workforce development program. I want to look at finding some additional funding to put into this program, because what they're doing in collaboration with the state, the city, other communities, is really helping people get jobs and helping businesses find employees. And so I really want to focus in on jobs, I want to focus in on, obviously, balancing the budget and meeting the needs of our citizens here.
Thank you, Ms. Zach. Mr. Zimberg?
I would love to find a way to spark the interest of the community, the citizens, to get involved. It's a good place to start with our own cities and communities. We can do tremendous good. And with that, we can expand to have more interest, a greater interest and voice in our country as well. Each and every change we make will have tremendous impact, not only on our community and family and our businesses, but also our children and our schools, our streets, our mass transit that I'm also in favor of, the DIA that I mentioned earlier. You know, that's a multi-billion-dollar asset of ours, and we really need to take care of that well.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey?
I really think the main purpose of a commissioner is to represent the interests of the residents, of the cities, of his or her district. I think the budget is important, but it's just one piece. That's why I've pushed environmental issues. You know, the folks in this region all have hailstones the size of golf balls in their freezers right now. Lot of us lost power. You know, supporting environmental and green issues isn't just something that is trendy or cool, it matters. I think, I submitted an anti-fracking resolution up to the county, it got nowhere because the Republicans would not let it go anywhere, but we are in danger of poisoning our lakes and our water supply. Public transportation matters to this whole county, and I think it's something that we can advocate for. We have a pulpit up there, and you can use social media, you can use editorials, you can use all sorts of methods and press releases and press conferences to talk about diversity and to welcome everyone in our county together.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Zimberg. And again, you've talked about this a little bit, but you can go into greater detail. How has your regular work experience helped your, let me start again. How has your regular work experience helped your political efforts?
It's very interesting that, first of all, I graduated from Hillsdale College in Economics. Two of my professors went on to start the largest economics institute in Europe, called the Adam Smith Institute. On the other, so it's very conservative. On the other hand, I'm a union electrician. I'm working with 700 other workers at refining the Marathon Oil Upgrade Program. So there, I'm dealing only with union people. It's kind of really cool to be able to express myself politically and have people that, on both sides of the fence, that really respect my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. Mr. Covey?
Thanks. I've been really fortunate to actually have three careers, so far anyway. The first 10 years of my working life, I organized in the community and organized political organizations and did human rights work and civil rights work. That's where I learned how to organize, and that's where I learned how to work with the media. The next 22 years of my life, I spent doing HIV/AIDS prevention education, working with hospitals, health departments, schools. And that was very, very interesting work, it was fulfilling work, and I got to work with teenagers, I worked with senior citizens, I worked with doctors and nurses. And that's where I think I learned more compassion, more acceptance, and perhaps a lot of public speaking. I've managed to speak to literally tens of thousands of people over the years about that health crisis. And then the last 10 years, I've been able to have a sort of a new career in politics and political advocacy. And I think the things that I've learned throughout my life, I can't tell you because I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zach?
I'm a social worker, and my field of expertise is employee assistance programs. And presently, I work at Beaumont Health System, taking care of employees, their whole gamut of personal issues. I took this position to the table to be a voice on health and human services. I have a unique voice. I've tried to use this expertise to work on issues on health and human services, and I feel good about what I've been able to do. For example, we now have a program of jail diversion for the mentally ill, where they are getting treatment rather than being incarcerated, as a result of my efforts when I first started. I've been able to work on many health initiatives. We have the Oakland Health Plan. Presently, I am on a committee on the Prescription Drug Program. Presently, I am on a committee on the prescription drug program. I was there today trying to improve that for residents. So I use this every day and bring something that's very important to the table.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. Okay, this is gonna be the last question. I'm gonna give you guys a minute and a half to answer this question. We're gonna start with Mr. Covey. Where do you see Oakland County, particularly our district, in five to 10 years? Mr. Covey?
I'm really optimistic, and it's because I've seen what we were able to do. As I mentioned before, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, this region was, was pretty iffy, it was pretty scary. And in my own city of Ferndale, as I said, we had an empty downtown, there was a canyon you could roll a bowling ball. But people working together, collaborating, members of both parties and independent people, young people, new residents and old residents, older residents, were able to turn things around. And it was using these principles that we've been talking about. New ideas, complete streets, walkability, getting people to understand that you don't have to move out to the far hinterlands, that you can rebuild what we have in the cities. And it's starting to happen across the nation. Young people are moving back into the cities. By the way, we were able to do that in Ferndale. They talked about the drain of the millennials going to Chicago and Atlanta. We stopped that from happening here, and we've got huge demographics now. And that helps seniors because it's important for a community to have young people, to have middle-aged people, and to have seniors together. So I'm very optimistic that I think we can take the ideas that have been so successful here and take them to Hazel Park and all the way up Woodward Avenue to the entire county. I, I'm very optimistic. I'm worried about the climate. It's, feels like Miami sometimes here. I worry about the hailstorms, and I don't know if there's much we can do about that. But we have shown this region a new way. I'm most proud of the diversity and the fact that people now get along with each other, and we're showing people that we can all get along.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Zack?
I'm very optimistic about this new district. I've had the opportunity of knocking on a lot of doors and meeting a lot of people, and we have wonderful, caring, engaged citizens. And that sense of community in all five communities that are in this district is the core of, of the excitement. People care about their communities, they want them to be successful, they love living there. Definitely, this region, the edge, the border of Detroit, you know, Eight Mile Border, we have a tremendous opportunity to move across the border, make this the hub of the city, the excitement in Ferndale, the excitement in Royal Oak, leverage that into places like Oak Park, Hazel Park. And I'm very optimistic about the positive growth for these, for these communities in this district.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. Mr. Zimberg?
I'm also very excited about the community. I think that the Smart Bus, if it looks fun and exciting, it can take us from one community to another, to another, and bring people in from other communities. It's gonna be this nucleus that's gonna fare very well up and down the Woodward Corridor. The businesses in, especially in Hazel Park and Ferndale and Oak Park, East Oak Park, there's a lot of vacancies right now. Over the next five years, those will expand quite a bit. I think that the tax, property tax issues and the foreclosure issues, a lot of those will be addressed favorably if I can help, help us do that, to make it more affordable and more smooth and stable for our communities. I think if we can reduce the amount of money we're spending or fat that we, that is directed to the jails, for example, that frees up a lot. If we're able to take better care and find more money from the insurance companies for our elderly. There's a lot of excitement in our area, and I'm looking forward to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. That concludes the question portion of this forum. Now the candidates will have an opportunity to give a one-minute closing statement. We'll go in reverse order of opening statements, so we'll start with Ms. Zack.
Thank you. It's undeniable that Craig Covey was a fine councilman and mayor in the city of Ferndale and is a strong advocate for a number of good causes. However, I believe that I am best suited to serve as county commissioner for the newly-formed 18th District. In my past five terms as commissioner, I have provided excellent and responsive constituent service to the five communities I have represented. I've supported and am knowledgeable about all job and economic development efforts to get our communities working again. And despite being a minority member of the commission, I've shown that I can get things done. I've leveraged my strategic position on the Finance Committee to ensure that we are managing the budget, yet at the same time, we have increased some services or maintained important services. I chose to run again in this challenging primary because I'm the more experienced county commissioner and because I offer a unique voice, lots of energy, and passionately care about helping others.
Thank you, Ms. Zack. Mr. Covey?
We know that we can halt urban sprawl, finely build public transit, and create a sustainable future here for our families and our kids. We know that we can change the old-style prejudices. Embracing all people makes us stronger, more prosperous, and much more interesting communities. We know we can have smart, efficient government while still protecting our most vulnerable citizens from high taxes and crime. I thank my volunteers for helping me with this campaign. We don't have a ton of money, but elections are won by hard work and live interaction with residents. Lots more at my website at www.coveyforoakland.com. Finally, I thank the League and my opponents, and I appreciate your commitment to the voters. I know you will join me in seeking that this forum be broadcast via web and cable to all the cities in our district so that voters in Oak Park, Huntington Woods, the Charter Township of Royal Oak, Hazel Park, and Ferndale can all be informed and better voters on August 7th. Please remember to vote on August 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Mr. Zimberg?
Our incumbents have strongly supported their favorite causes and government, government and most of its branches have run astray and become big and powerful bullies. It's time for each of us to get involved and reclaim our voice. Replace our bipartisan bickering with common sense ideas and solutions that we so desperately need. We may not have a lot of money, but we got enough creativity to correct any of our problems here. As I mentioned, I don't have all the answers, and I'm not perfect, but I love our community. And I think I do possess the unique ability to cut to the root of problems, weigh the alternatives, present and present fair and meaningful solutions. Even in your vote of support next month, and especially in November, we'll make a special statement. We need to strengthen our communities and families and leave our kids a more meaningful and rewarding future by applying common sense ideas and solutions now.
Thank you, Mr. Zimberg. That concludes tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters would like to thank the candidates, the audience, and Ferndale City Cable for making this forum possible. For further nonpartisan information on these candidates and others, you can check the League website for our voter guide. Again, the League website is L W V O A dot org. Re-broadcast times of this forum are as follows. It will be on Ferndale City Cable, W F R N, playing daily, starting tomorrow, at 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM, 10:00 AM, and 10:00 PM. It will also be on the city of, there will be a link to it on the city of Ferndale's website, that's Ferndale hyphen M I dot com. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens like you. Our membership is open to men and women over the age of 18. Remember to vote on August 7th. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Covey. Appreciate it.
You did good for first timer, real good.
A little bit on that first question on the last one. A little bit on that first question.
Oh, yeah.
You have a nice voice, very soothing.
You have an interesting background, being a union person and the other piece.
I didn't even go into the certified paralegal stuff.
You can't say much in a minute. You really cannot say much.
Right.
You gotta talk fast.
You too. Thank you. Good luck. Good luck to you.
You too. Thank you. Good luck. Good luck to you. You got it. Yes. I'm happy. I'm very 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 happy.